13th meeting of the Campbell County School Board. It's good to have you all here. First thing we'll do is stand and say pledge allegiance, followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much.
Will you slide down?
You alright?
I'm good.
Hi. First presentation tonight is Virginia Literacy Act presentation by Dr. Hale and Ms. Walsh.
Alright, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Tonight, Ms. Walsh and I are excited to share our updates for the Virginia Literacy Act. This has been a major collaborative effort between my team, as well as her team, as well as many, many teachers, principals, and it has truly been a collaborative effort, especially focusing on K through 5, but also really looking at kindergarten through 8th grade. So for tonight, we're going to talk to you about a term you're going to continue to hear more about, high-quality instructional materials. In addition, the science of reading and upcoming training that we have, also how we plan to monitor student progress, as well as their assessments, and then also that continued engagement with parents and the community, because we know how important that is. So just a reminder of our mission, we are heading into the end of the year, and this is a wonderful and exciting time. I know it can be a very stressful time, but we truly enjoy celebrating our students, and especially our graduates, which you will meet and see our valedictorian and salutatorians at our June meeting. But our mission is to truly provide an education that enables all of our students to pursue any endeavor, and the foundation of this is their literacy, them being able to read, write, and communicate.
So, as you've heard, the state is requiring us to do a literacy plan for the division. And of course, we rooted that plan in our mission. So, as you see, our literacy plan starts with a vision that says, "We believe that our CCPS mission is rooted in effective literacy development." With that in mind, we are committed to the following three things. We want to equip our teachers with foundational understanding of reading research to ensure our students successfully learn to read, write, think, and communicate. Second, we want to provide instruction that is aligned with the science of reading research, and is high-quality, and that's explicit and systematic for instruction, and when needed, for our students' intervention. And finally, we want to collaborate with parents and guardians to ensure students' joy of reading. We decided when we went through a vision, we wanted a vision that people could talk to. They didn't have to memorize, they may not get all the words in there, but those three things, right? We want to know what to do well, as a group of educators. We want to do that with the right resources, and we want to create a love of reading. We want to do that, and align with our parents to do that. So that's where we started with this plan, is that vision. The first thing in that vision, and like Dr. Hale said, there's some words in here that you're going to constantly hear from the state and see from the state. High-quality instructional material is one of them. Basically, this says, "We've got to choose a material." And what it says is a key shift across the country and the state is how educators had typically thought about curriculum, that is, high-quality materials. And what they're saying is it requires us to make sure we adhere to both scope, sequence, and the individual lesson content. That means we don't say, "Here's our resource, I like this, and I like this, and I like this." We say, "Hey, this is the resource, let's learn it, let's figure it out, and let's use it exactly how the resource is intended." So, we have looked at that, and we've done a lot of work in regards to our instructional material. Back at the beginning of the year, we started waiting for the state to come up with their state list. When they did, we started reviewing the state list. We actually reviewed that state list, and we used a thorough rubric to do it. And we said, "What should these programs most align with what we've been doing in Campbell County, and really adheres to the science of reading?" So we came up with three programs. We chose MyView, we chose Bookworms, and we chose Open Court. Those three programs, we brought to actually a committee. We had about 26 teachers on that committee. The way those teachers were chosen is, A, they're either in the literacy or the math curriculum team for our division. Those are teachers we said, "You are leaders, you need to go teach this curriculum, tell us what's good with it, tell us what's bad with it, and help us develop what we need in Campbell County." In addition to that, those teachers have gone through Letters 1 and Letters 2 training. That is training on the science of reading. They understand phonics, phonemic awareness, they understand comprehension, they understand everything our students need. So they had the training, and they've had experience with our curriculum. So those 26 teachers sat on the curriculum team, and all seven of our principals sat on this review committee. In addition to that, we invited a couple other stakeholders. We invited SPED to the table, we invited EL to the table, we invited Title 1 to the table. We wanted everyone that's interacting at elementary to have a part in listening and hearing from these companies. At the end of that meeting, I said, "Do we want to take all three programs to the school? Do we want to take two? I want to at least take two." They said, "We want to take all three." So what we did is we took all three back to the building. We developed a very simplistic rubric, and as grade levels, our grade levels went through the rubric and said, "This is what we see, and this is how we see it." Overwhelmingly, our data revealed Bookworms was that. And I will say, when you look at the research out there, if you want to go research, and I did a lot of research, I wanted to find anything possibly out there. The research does lend to that, so we're pretty excited. I think our teachers are excited about it. Right now, we are in the works of looking at Bookworms, and I know you'll ask the question of, "How are you looking at that?" We're looking at every single book. We have Google Docs coming out our ears. Every single book, every single thing in that program, we're looking at to say, "Hey." There will probably be some books that will say, "Hey, we don't think this will be, so we'll have to make some adjustments curriculum with that." We're in the midst of that. At the end of our review, I'm going to sit down with Dr. Stanley and Dr. Hale and say, "Okay, this book has a cuss word in it, do we want to use this one?" And we're going to flush out that, and we're going to figure out what books we use. All in all, this program has produced really good results, and we are in the midst of saying, "How do we pace it out? How do we make this program as easy as possible for our teachers to actually do with fidelity?" It's going to be a big lift. You're going to hear some other things that are lifts next year for our teachers. We want to make this as easy as possible for our teachers. I think they're going to enjoy it, they're going to like it, but it's still going to be a lot of work. So we're looking at training, at New Teacher Week. We're actually even looking at, for TLA, our Teacher Learning Academy, we're going to do like a kind of an overview of Bookworms. So teachers that want to come hear about it and learn more about it, will know more about Bookworms. So that is our major fundamental thing we're putting in place next year. In addition to that, in elementary school, we have Ufly, our teachers love that for small group. We have Phonics Core, which is our main phonics program, and we have some supplemental things like Core 5, it's our online program. So, we've looked at that, the elementary-wise. And then now, what we've done is we actually did another group of people, we brought Title 1 teachers together. And we brought our Title 1 teachers and our principals together and said, "Now let's look at what we're doing in the classroom, what do we need to do when kids are struggling?" And we've aligned the programs that we're going to use in Title 1 for those struggling kids with our core program. And we've adopted Phonics lessons, and we've adopted phonemic awareness intervention. So that's fleshing out. I know that SPED in elementary is looking at what they need to do and figuring out what program would be that, and saying, "Hey, this is where we're going to go with that." But that's kind of where we've laid out our materials in elementary. I've told teachers, I said, "Next year, it's going to feel uncomfortable. When you do a new program, you're going to have to practice at home, and it's going to feel really uncomfortable." But year 2 and year 3, guess what? We still want you getting your own flair, but you're going to have to teach the program. But year 2 and year 3, you won't be sitting there with a manual in front of you. You'll just know it. But to start off, we're going to have to do a lot of, "Hey, here it is, practice at home, practice as a grade level. Practice it by yourself, practice it with your team." And then you go in and you teach your kids, you're going to be like, "That didn't go well." Well, why didn't that? And we're going to support them. We're going to support them with how we do this and how we do it well. So that's an overview of our elementary.
So for secondary, we already have a core program that is in place. It is on the state-approved list, it's HMH Into Literature. It is digitally-based, so it's really easy to use for our teachers, and we're going to continue our curriculum work that we need to do, because we've also not quite, we've mentioned this, but we also have changing standards that are coming in English. So it is a lot of work that our teachers will be doing, and we're working to align that. Additionally, this year, we were able to use with state funds from all in Virginia, Lexia PowerUp for grades 6 through 8. Our team went through every part of that software to make sure that it was appropriate for our students, and we will be continuing that program at least for the next two years, and we're very thankful for that. In addition for intervention, and this is pre the Literacy Act coming into effect, we had started during the past year, we were able to add it to all schools, reading intervention for our middle school students. We know that sometimes there are students who get to 6th grade who need additional support in reading, for a variety of reasons, and the main reason we started was due to gaps in learning as a result of the pandemic. For that, we now have reading interventionists at all of our schools, and they have been using a program called Wilson Just Words. It's really about word recognition and making sure that students have those foundational skills to then be able to move toward comprehension, which is typically what you see in secondary, that continued emphasis, and also the emphasis on content vocabulary. We know that's very important for our students. The state has not released their supplemental list yet, but we do anticipate that. Right now, they're saying in September, so hopefully in the fall, is the plan. So you'll start to see how it is all coming together for that K through 8, and in addition, we're looking at what else we can provide in pre-K as a Division 2. As always, we continue to review our materials and address any concerns that come up.
And I appreciate that. One thing I'll say that we feel really good about in elementary is, we have a lot of resources in elementary. Honestly, with an effort to support our teachers, we have a lot. Probably too much, right? I got this, I got this. This is going to enable us to get rid of a lot of resources and be like, "Hey, these are our major sticking points. These are our major programs, so they're not doing this for this, and this for this, and this for this." So we're pretty excited about that. It was all with good intent of wanting to support our teachers, not them ever going without a resource, but we got to streamline it, so that's exciting. You heard about, we have to do science of reading research, and our teachers need to know what that is, and how they need to teach, and that's the training. So here's the program, right? But we know what doesn't make education is just a program, it's the teacher, it's the knowledge of a teacher. So in K through 5, we will stick with Letters, it's been approved by the state. There's a Letters 1 and a Letters 2, and it's extensive. I talked to you guys about this in the fall, it's like a college course. Letters 1 covers phonemic awareness and phonics, and it talks about a lot of how students learn to read, the brain, and how it builds a bridge. It's extensive. Letters 2 goes into comprehension, vocabulary, syntax, some things of that nature. So, like I told you, our curriculum team has gone through that. Our math and literacy curriculum team have gone through Letters 1 and 2. We have a large number of teachers that have gone through Letters 1. By the end of next year, every teacher in the division that has been here three years or longer in elementary will have had Letters 1. We will then, we'll do one cohort of Letters 2 next year and get some more people through Letters 2, but then we'll really focus on getting all of our teachers through Letters 2. I'm proud as a division because we're focused on Letters 1 and Letters 2. Some divisions say, "Hey, let's do Letters 1." It doesn't teach everything, we've got to do both. And our teachers, if you ask a teacher that's gone through Letters, I don't know of a single teacher in our division that says, "That wasn't amazing training." So they are invested in this, they are talking to people back at the building, saying, "You're going to really enjoy this when you take it." It is a lot, but our teachers are really appreciating the training we're doing. So K through 5, we'll do Letters 1 and Letters 2.
And then for secondary, Letters 1 and 2, we do have secondary teachers who've been trained through both. They have enjoyed it, and it's really been helpful for their practice. But we also know that they need more support with secondary examples. So we will be using the AIM Institute for next year for a cohort to go through, because it will provide more of those 6 through 8 examples, in addition to comprehension and writing. So we are excited about that part.
So we're going to talk a little bit about intervention. So what happens when our students aren't where they need to be? They're not with their grade-level peers, and we need to catch them up. Basically, our elementary program focuses on students being pulled by reading intervention specialists, they're reading specialists, they've been trained. K through 5, we pull them for 30 minutes a day. And what do we do in that 30 minutes? We do very specific reading interventions that are systematic and explicit. So this is how we do this. Our goal for those kids is in one year, they're caught up through their grade-level peers, and they're exited from the program. So we'll continue to look at that. We have, again, like I told you, we had a program, and that program was a really good program, and our teachers would say it was. It wasn't aligned to the core. So what happened is you had children coming back from Title 1, and they're like, "I just learned this rule." And a grade-level student shouldn't even know that rule. It was a great program in how it taught, but it didn't have the pacing like our pacing. So we are aligning that to say, "Hey, let's look at this." We are also doing a little bit of different things. Starting next year, we will be looking at homeroom teachers, we'll be teaching Phonics Core, that's grade-level phonics. When teachers intervene, they will be intervening on the whole group lesson they just taught. In the past, we said, "Let's go fill the holes." What research says is just because I don't know this, doesn't mean I can't know this. So our classroom teachers will say, "Hey, here's the whole group lesson. Now I'm going to help you with whatever you're having difficulty with the whole group lesson." Our Title 1 intervention teachers will be going back and filling those holes. So we feel like that, research-wise, really shows we need to move in that direction, and we'll do that over next year. That's going to be a learning shift for our teachers, and it's a learning shift for me even. But new research shows that's how we need to go with that, this is going to help us do that.
Middle school reading intervention, it's been called reading enrichment. And so this is a support that, again, it's very strategic, scaffolded, and to help them build their skills that they need at each of our four middle schools. Rebecca Simmons and Kimberly Hancock work heavily with this group, and they have done a phenomenal job of leading them. The class sizes are meant to be small, because we know that class size of 10, when you're doing an intervention, really helps those students, and that way they can make the progress that they need. And in addition, it's the idea that they grow over time. They use that data to then say, "Who needs to continue to stay in this program? If I'm a 6th grader, do I need to continue on? Or is that student ready to have more free time in their schedule for other electives and other things?" But this has been very much a systematic and strategic process to really help those students make the gains that they need in reading.
So let's talk about what we're going to use to say, "Is it working?" There's three major things we're going to use in elementary, and one of those will be crossover up into middle school. You've heard of PALS. PALS next year will be called VALS. VALS will be K through 3. The state will be creating in years to come of 4 or 5, but keep in mind, it took the state three years to create VALS. So, we will be, and that will be another lift for our teachers. Our coaches are currently better understanding what VALS is and require of our teachers, because there's been a lot of shifts in that over the last couple of years. They started with a product, and they've shifted it. We're going to make it as easy as possible for our teachers to do that. That assessment, we will use, and we will learn how to use it very well. The second thing we will use is DIBELS. We use in 4th and 5th grade. It really does a great job of telling our kids where they have their weaknesses and us zeroing on those weaknesses. And then, lastly, we'll use MAP. MAP does a really good job of indicating where's our students as complete readers. VALS and DIBELS does a lot on learning how to read, like, "How am I reading?" MAP really tells us, "Is comprehension there, vocabulary there," and it does some of that stuff. Those three measures will be really important to us, and we look at those. Our PALS has been outdated right now, so our principals really can't use PALS a lot to say, "Hey, what's happening?" We've used MAP a ton. And our principals are doing a great job of saying, "What kids are here, what kids are here, what do we do?" What we'll do is a monitoring cycle of September, October, because you've got to remember that we test most of our kids with MAP when they return, and then VALS will go into effect after about a month being in school. And then for kindergarten, it will actually be in October. They actually do PALS in October, they let the kindergartners have a little time. Then again, in January, they come back and, "Let's see what happens." And then again, in March, April. Typically, I've not gone out and met with principals for data meetings. This year, I started it, and it was really useful, I think, on getting some of the scores moved before we had SLO scores. So that's how we're going to monitor it. Now I want to talk to you about how we're making sure, before we monitor it, we do it well. Again, a major focus we have is how do we support our principals and our teachers with doing this well, and effectively, but efficiently as well? Kindergarten teachers have a lot on them, they're juggling a lot, so how do we do this well? The first thing we're going to do as a county is we're going to have look-forers for teachers. It's going to be like, "Hey, what are the things you need to make sure you have in place?" And that's going to be in the program, that's also going to be how you teach. We have found out a lot in the last year, COVID hurt us in the sense of, we stopped being able to really interact with our kids, and stopped having them talk together, and it impacted us somewhat. So what happens is, you can see in some classrooms, not in our division, but in some classrooms, you can walk in and say, "It's a teacher talking at kids." It's not students learning, because it's just, "I'm imparting information." But we know learning means, "I'm going to impart information, and you're going to talk about it, you're going to share, you're going to process." How do we make that happen? When we do a program like this, the program can be good, but the teacher's doing all the talking? That's one of the reasons that one of the programs was not rated high when we were looking at programs. It was the teacher doing all the talking, the students weren't doing work, the teacher was doing all the work. So we're going to do a look-for for teachers for that. We're going to have their weekly grade-level POC meetings, talk about units. We have gotten to weekly planning with teachers, but we need to get to unit. What is this unit covering? And again, with the new standards Dr. Hale talked about, that's going to be really important. We're also going to look at work review. Hey, not what am I doing as a teacher, but what are the kids doing? So we're going to do some work reviews of, hey, let's bring the students writing about this story, and let's look at what's the strengths, what's the weaknesses, what does this look like? And we're also going to use our monthly common assessment data. We have power standards, we're determining those power standards from the new standards, and we're going to use that assessment data to say, "How do we intervene in a timely fashion?" That's our plan as a county, to say, "How do we not get to MAP testing, and VALS testing, and DIBELS testing, and say, 'Oh man, what happened?'" This monitors it along the way. School leadership teams will be having monthly meetings to review the implementation and address any concerns. We're going to have teachers frustrated with things. Every program we put in place, we do. We need to hear from them. That's going to be our vehicle for saying, "What's going well, what's not going well, how do we support differently?" Even when we looked at this program, we saw some things that were really weird to us, and we were able to go back to the author of the program and say, "Why do you do this?" And she very clearly was like, "Let me tell you why." And when she told us why, we were like, "That makes complete sense," but we did not see that. But that will be our vehicle to ask questions from the company and reflect on how we're doing things. And then we'll also have the school leadership team meetings to review student data and determine next steps. How are we doing, what do we do differently, what do our teachers need to do? And then principals will monitor, though we walk-throughs with me, every month I go and visit principals and we do walk-throughs, not as a gotcha. My walk-throughs are about, "How do I help? What's going well, and as a division, how do we make your job as easy as possible so you can do what's right for kids?" And then we'll also have the literacy coach, literacy specialists, and principals walking to say, "Hey, that's not going well at all, we need to buy this for you, we need to figure this out for you." And then lastly, the formal observations by principal. So that's how we're going to look and say, "How are we doing on a week-in, week-out basis before we get to assessment data?" Lastly, we're going to engage the parents. You know, and you've heard, in the fall, you've heard me talk about this? I want our kids loving to read. I want to, again, walk through the halls and see kids walking in the halls with their nose in a book. We lost a little bit of that, and that's the great thing about Bookworms, it's actual books. Every child will have a book, and they will have the ability to do it. We want to really activate our parents, and the theme that I'm pushing really hard is, "Let's get them reading, let's get them loving it." It can be an audiobook, it doesn't need to be me sitting down and reading with you. Let's listen to an audiobook and talk about it. So the following things we have in place, that we'll continue to do, is that open house, parent-teacher conferences, division literacy nights we'll have, we'll have school literacy nights, we'll have student data summaries. For our intervention kiddos in Title 1, there will be a written plan for each of those students. We want to make those plans like actionable plans, not a do, but an actual plan. That's going to be a lift, but it will be good. So those student plans, and then we want to recreate, you guys probably remember, we used to have parent resource centers, and we've kind of done away with them, right? Well, honestly, the focus of this parent resource center next year will be all about, how are we getting books in hands of parents, how are we getting audiobooks in hands of parents? What are we doing to get books? We don't really need to teach you, we just want you to create a love of reading with your child. And it doesn't need, if you don't feel comfortable and confident reading to your child, how do we give you something to then read, listen with them? So that's going to be our major focus, you heard it in the fall, you hear it again. I'm really passionate about getting us just loving it, we can travel and do things. You know, my husband's not an avid reader, but guess what he reads? He reads when he needs to fix the fridge, he needs to fix the car, he needs, all those things, right? He taught my septile, and his child, that's how you read, right? And Colin now, you know, at UVA, and he's doing computer science, you know? And guess what? Colin reads to understand. He doesn't read a lot for, you know, leisure, like I do, but he reads to understand. We want parents knowing, "Hey, there's many different options to create joy." Let's activate that. So with that being said, this is a quote we pulled for you. "Show me a family of readers, and I will show you the people who moved the world." We truly believe that in Campbell County, we believe that literacy, again, is the gateway to everything we do. So with that in mind, we open, Dr. Hale, and I open the floor to any questions you may have for us.
I just have a question. With Letters, I know it's a lot of undertaking for training, do we do that internally? Or is that, are we bringing down someone to do that?
We do. Interestingly enough, that's a great question, because it's gotten really expensive. We had our literacy specialist and our SPED coaches actually trained in Letters. And so they are actually the ones that are facilitating. Because Lexia is the company that does Letters. At this time, it's $17,000 to fly someone to Dallas and train them.
That's one person.
One person, you're correct.
That was my guess.
So we're really lucky.
I thought we were doing it internally, but I just wanted to make sure.
We're really, really lucky.
So we started this process, what, two years ago?
Yep.
Started this process two years ago, and had them train our people, so that our people could train the rest of our staff. And we created a plan to really train all of our elementary teachers. And like you say, at the end of next year,
Yep.
All of our teachers that have been here for three years or more will be trained. And then the state came out with the Literacy Act, and they said that all teachers needed to be trained in the science of reading, and Letters wasn't initially on the list, after we spent years and all the money, you know, to train our teachers. But fortunately, it made the list, so we were all pretty happy last week when that came out. Because we have, we've done a big investment in that. And a lot of that money came from CARES funding, which the timing of that just worked well for us.
We have seven Letters 1 facilitators, we have five Letters 2 facilitators, just that.
And that cost is part of the reason why we are looking at other reputable resources like the AIM Institute, because it is more affordable, but still high-quality.
But I will say, as Ms. Walsh said, that is one of the few professional developments that I've seen teachers walk away from going, "That hit it right on the head, and that was well worth the time and effort."
Ms. Walsh?
Yes.
You said something early on in your presentation that I hope you're right, but you said, "This will give our teachers a big lift."
I think year 1, the lift will be heavy, right? Year 1, the lift is going to be heavy. It's going to be like pushing the rock up the hill.
Oh, they're going to be lifted.
I think after that, I do think in year 2 and 3, it will. I truly believe that. I will be very honest with you, I'm doing everything in my pack. When I talk to teachers, I'm saying, "How do we help make this as easy as possible?" Next year's going to be a tough year, between VALS, and we're required to do it. This is not an option. I like pacing out things.
Some divisions have not chosen their resources as of yet. So we have, we've ordered them. I think we did a very nice job of getting teacher input and getting them involved in the decision-making process. But we're still talking about bringing in a lot of resources over the summer and figuring out how to best train our staff before kids get in the building. And it's going to be a big lift.
So one thing we'll do to help, we're trying to help, is I talked about Teacher Learning Academy. Teachers can voluntarily come to that, right, and get an overview, right? That's one thing I'm doing. The second thing I'm doing is there's, all the teachers that were on that review committee that have been through Letters 1 and Letters 2, they're our leaders in curriculum, there's an asynchronous course. Part of the funds Dr. Hale and I talked through about the summer is curriculum funds. They're going to actually come do curriculum, but later in the summer, I'm going to give them, they don't even know this yet, so, I'm going to give them the funds to say, "If you'll do this asynchronous course at home, I'll pay you." And so we'll get some teachers in the division, so we'll have a sprinkling of kindergarten, sprinkling of first-grade teachers, doing an eight-hour training. But the coaches just went through it last week for each grade level, and they said it was really some of the best training they've had, that's asynchronous. So we're going to get some teachers, so we're trying to do some of that. So the coaches have understanding, our curriculum team has, but teachers have some understanding. So hopefully, it won't be as hard, and we'll be able to think through some of these things. But whenever you do a new program, it is a difficulty of practicing at home, practicing, you know, having the manual, and it doesn't feel good to have a manual in front of you, right? Teachers feel like, "Oh, I'm not looking like I'm the teacher I need to be if I have a..." They, teachers feel like, oh, I'm, I'm not, not looking like I'm the teacher I need to be if I have a manual in my lap. Year one, there's a good teacher, there, there should be a manual in your lap. Year two and three, you're going to be great and they're going to take off. So it's going to be pushing the boulder up. But guess what? After we get to the top of the hill, then it's like, awesome. That's my hope.
On the elementary school level, you talk about pulling kids. Would that be a 101 or would that be a small group?
Great question. It will be a small group. We're looking to, five is ideal. Sometimes we push it up to six or seven, but it's, it's a small group. We are looking at next year, having our intervention teachers push into the classrooms simply because they're losing about a quarter or more of their day walking the halls. So we're making some adjustments. Some teachers won't want that and we understand that. We'll, we'll pick the right teachers for it, but I think they will align. But that small group is ideal.
And will any of this replace reading 180 or is that?
We, with the move with Lexia adding Power Up, we will have less read 180 use, but we will still have some. Because we know some students will still need that. Exactly. So really we kind of have a continuum of what we will be providing for our students.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions. When you talk about the research and the science of reading, I assume this is evidence-based, peer-reviewed, well documented?
Very well.
And you're comfortable with this research? And then are, are new teachers that are coming in fresh out of college? Have, are they benefiting in their training from this research, this gold standard? In other words, are they already trained the way you want them trained in the science and research of reading? They should be.
So great questions. First, the, the science of reading is well documented. What I will say is a lot of people are throwing that word around. And sometimes they're not doing it with intent of what actually is. So, so I constantly am having us go back and say, what does this mean? Like, it doesn't mean we just teach phonics in K and one and two. So I will say, we believe in the research out there and it is well documented. But how companies or people or even school divisions do things, maybe sometimes we, it's set in that. So I'm trying to be extra careful. We keep on going back to what this actually means. And Letters I and Letters II really gives us that foundation of what does this really mean? How does the brain actually learn? I mean, it's complicated, you know? So that's the first thing. We do believe in this, but we have to keep on checking ourselves because people will, salespeople will come in and be like, guess what I have? And you're like, but that's not completely aligned. So we're being very careful with that. We are in conversations, beginning to have conversations. Dr. Stanley and I talked about this, Dr. Hale and I talked about this. Keith Bennett, who, who's been telling, hey, Ashley, give me a list of things to tell Liberty. Because we have a lot of Liberty student teachers. They have not jumped on the training yet. They're doing some of their own, but our teachers right now are not stepping in with the depth of this understanding yet. And we're hopeful that that will happen in the next year with our partnership. I feel like we have some good partnerships with Lynchburg and Liberty. We have been in conversations with them and they are, they are beginning to look at that. We haven't seen it yet. So that is, we would love to have them come because right now they're going to come and teach for a couple of years and then get letter training. We're going to get them settled and then get the training to them.
So, okay. Second observation, you, you talked about coordinating your remediation and intervention with grade level. And so I assume your goal is a little bit to just keep it being uniform. But what about the kids that are above grade level? Does our bookworm, does our program address that? Does it allow them to? Because I don't want you to be so uniform, you're keeping kids back. So how are you addressing that?
It does. It has a common, a shared reading part and an English language art part that is whole group and common. It also has a D I, a differentiation time in which it's about 15 minutes that they pull groups of kids based on where they are. They stretch some of these kids. Our higher level kids, we know this, we can do a little with them and say, go to a book club and take off, right? But it does have the time that we're spending doing that with them. And then we're digging in deep again with 15 minutes for the lower students on specifically, what do you need? And then they're getting extra intervention. The hard thing with intervention that we find is when you pull a student into intervention, they're losing time in the classroom. And so we're always battling. I was just having this conversation with coaches today is, okay, when the kids go out, what are they missing? And sometimes they're missing foundational things that are impacting some, and our data is showing it. And we see it and we're going to rectify it. But it's hard just when you get intervention, there's an impact. So, so that means we don't intervene. Students that are, research says, students that are three months or, or less don't need to be pulled out for intervention. The, the teacher can catch them up and I, our teachers can. If they're more than that, then yeah, we need to do some intervention, but we've got to be really careful when we pull them for that intervention.
And then the last question. I know that this is sort of state mandated, it's addressing a problem. It may have been a problem before the pandemic, but I'm just curious, you know, I hear a lot of excitement and enthusiasm. But how bad are our kids doing now? I mean, I mean, what are your, what, what are you hoping to achieve more than? Do you know where I'm going with this? I mean, it sounds like, oh, thank goodness we're getting this program because our kids can't read. And I don't believe that. So what are your goals or, I sort of know what your goals are, but how, how bad are we now? Or how much help do we need?
We have some growth. I think that one, some examples of this is we, we've done a good job of teaching. Our teachers are dedicated, they are hardworking. There's some slight shifts that we've needed, that this is going to enable us to make. One, for example, is this. We haven't focused, we teach conference and we teach vocabulary in the younger grades, but teachers sometimes don't follow, follow all the way through with independent practice because of time. That's the reason. So we really are seeing that in the data come out. And so this, this research kind of confirms that, right? We have some shifts to make. The way we taught phonics, we taught phonics why, by using whole words. Well, science of reading says the most effective, the things we were doing in the past weren't bad, it wasn't the most effective way. You can find research that says that is, right? It wasn't the most effective way. What we know is the most effective way is you start teaching the pieces and you put them together to teach phonics. So it's adjusting some of this. And the great thing I do feel like is we've done the training. We, we, we've been talking about this research for years now. And we slowly made some adjustments so it doesn't all come crumbling down, right? One, one year, guess what? You're doing everything different. There's a lot of adjustments our teachers have made. Do we have a group of students that we're not serving as much as we need to? Yes. And that's where this comes. Yes, the state's requiring it. Are we going to make gold out of whatever they're asking us to do? That's our intent. We are, A, intending to protect them. That, there's a lot rushing at them. There's a rushing river with new standards, with new programs. We're trying to say, how do we protect our teachers to do what's right for kids? Do I think that things we're putting in place are right for kids and will really help some of our weak students that are below? We have some kids that are in Title I for many years. That's not good. We've got to figure that out and change this. I think this practice will help those kids that are in Title I year, year after year after year. So I think in that regard, and so we've decided, hey, even when the state's saying do this, we've said, how do we do this and do right by teachers? And really right by our kids? Are we in, are we in the tank? No, our teachers are doing great stuff. Are there adjustments we can make? Yes. And some of that now, I feel like teachers are seeing is this tweak or this tweak. And those tweaks make a lot of difference when it comes to learning. And so what's exciting is our teachers, I think, are open to it. We're, no, and we told teachers, we're doing great things. We've got to make some shifts in that. It's not an overall overhaul.
And I'll say, one of the greatest benefits of this program is it also is very strong in writing. We have been talking about writing, the need for our students to have continued experiences. So we feel like that will be a support that will align with work we're already doing. And the other strong part that we see really helping with six through eight is you need to be able to read, but you also need to be able to read a science book. Okay? Or you need to be able to read this math problem. Or you need to be able to read the social studies primary source. So we also need to continue our work in content area reading because you read differently for different things. My husband's a truck driver. How he reads is very different than how I read on a daily basis. We're both important as far as what we need to be able to do and communicate and to do the things that we need to do in our lives. So bringing some of these pieces together are important.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Good luck. Dr. Pontius, are you going to talk to us about the junior?
Yeah, I got you.
Junior O T C.
So let me kind of set the stage real quick for Dr. Pontius. He, uh, as you all know, we've had some, some brief conversations about what an ROTC program in Campbell County might look like. So as promised, we kind of dug into it a little bit and are looking at some of our options. And Dr. Pontius is going to present our findings and I appreciate him doing it. He's passionate about this topic and again, I appreciate him digging into it.
There we go. Got it. Give me a second. All right. So give you an update on what we found with research in the ROTC program. Still loading, 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 loading. There we go. All right. There's multiple ROTC programs, so we're just going to use Navy as an example. Talk more about that here at the end of it. But there's actually two separate programs that we looked at, the J R T C program and the National Defense Cadet Corps. And they differ slightly, but the, the bottom line is it's the same program for kids. The experience will be identical for kids. The J R T C is partially funded by the Navy, whereas the N N D C is entirely local funded. So J R T C has higher requirements on the program about student participation. Also who's going to teach in the class, meaning that it has to be a retired officer or N C O in the classroom teaching kids. Very hard to find those individuals right now. And there's a significant waitlist to get approved for a J R T C. So we were talking with the coordinator of the program, the admiral recommended us look at the Navy National Defense Cadet Corps. We have to fund that, but he said that's a very good way to start a program rapidly and then you can go back and apply for J R T C. It shows the local division or school is vested, has the students interested, has the program going and the school, school division support. And then it makes it easier to get a J R T C. Oftentimes you, you would be on a waitlist anyways, waiting for J R T C program funding. What are the program highlights? They're both identical, promotes patriotism, citizenship, respect for authority, personal development, national security, community service. All those great things that you already know about a J R T C program. It's, I'm not going to read everything to you, you guys already know everything about that. One of the biggest benefits for the students who participated outside of the citizenship, if they do go and they, and they enlist, they start out at a higher pay rate. They have more benefits when they go in there. When I was in the Army in basic training, I can remember a few of the soldiers went through the J R T C. They start more squared away. They're very able to help guide people who don't know what they're doing. So it's a great way to start the military, military career. The core sequence, they have Naval Science I, Naval Science II, III and IV. So it's a four-year program. You could start at any year. So you could start as a freshman and go all the way up to Navy Science IV as a, as a senior. Or you could say, I'm a senior and now I'm just interested in it and I would take Naval Science I. So you can have a mixed age group in, in the program depending on where they wanted to start. You could see it kind of loses some students as a year, those who really want to go through the whole four-year program. The, the estimates is about, you have about 15 kids who are going to stick with it till the end. Again, those are just estimates. Each course has its own purpose, so this is a curriculum that's provided to you by the Navy. We would send an instructor to get this training. We don't have to make up anything. We just take what they do and we teach it, works it through it. Very, very good scope and sequence. Here are the, the other interesting things that you can add on, kind of like competition teams. You have marksmanship, orienteering, drill, fitness, cybersecurity. This is just a sampling of all the many opportunities that, that the program could have through the instructor developing in there that kids could participate on. My daughter participated on it. The air rifle was a huge fun thing to do. They did the drill and would go off and compete on military bases with other teams. Just great opportunities. We surveyed our kids, overwhelming interest in our kids. We have 232 students who are very interested, 567 somewhat interested. Heavily, the, the significant interest was in the Rustberg High School area in this zone, in this corridor. So we think the kids, the kids want it. You heard from them earlier in the year, they, they want this. So we think it's a great opportunity. It requires a lot. So what are estimated time fund? We wanted to bring it to you guys now to talk about it. You know, is it a go, no-go? Do we apply and go through the application process? Do we start committing to it? So by August, we need to have an application in. By May of next year, you would have an acceptance or denial from the Navy. And then next year, through the budget process, you would start talking about what that means. Working that into your budget while we're waiting for approval. If we were going to go that route, June, you would start searching for instructors. With the N N D C, they don't have to be retired officers or retired N C Os. It could be a teacher, it could be anybody. We would set those requirements locally, which will make it, finding a teacher a lot easier for us. By the fall, we'd hire an instructor. They would, they would tend to Navy training. So they would take, I think, a week training to go and learn the program, learn how to run the program. And then probably by January 2026, we could probably have a semester starting to start the program or, or go underway. There's a lot to get into, get the program up, got to order the uniforms. The instructor's got to learn all the ins and outs of the Navy and how that works. Estimated salary benefits, we would set that locally based on what we felt was appropriate. It would be probably a 12-month position. We would have to fund uniforms. We would have to fund the supplies, would have to fund the instructor tracing. So first year estimates get you about 150,000 to 180,000 plus your travel to military bases for the students as they go, as they start to learn things. You want those opportunities to be on base to learn about the military life and what's, what it all has to offer. And then there would be just ongoing costs after that. After a couple of years of demonstrating a successful program, we would apply for J R T C. And then we would get reimbursement once we got to that, if we ever cross that bridge. He said some programs stay in N D C and are quite happy with it. You get local control of that because you control your instructor certifications, who's teaching the class and things like that. You don't have to go out and be dependent on a retired officer to, to find that person and, and go through that process. So that's it in a nutshell. Two instructors are ideal. Could probably start with one and then looking to add, add a separate one as we get going. There's just different, it's, it's a really big program and instructors play off each other on what they focus on and how they teach the program. So that would be the goal for that. We do think Rustberg High School has the most interest in, in space available as we, as we looked at the survey and looked at our buildings. You have to have enough for drill, enough for if you did a rifle class, you'd have to have space for that, storage equipment. There's a lot of storage issues. And then going through here would be starting student, student recruitment sometime this time next year if we got permission to go for it. So that's it in a nutshell. Try to answer any questions that you have. Right now it's still tentative, you know? We'd have to apply and go through that, but we'd like to start applying this summer. Get that in by August, has to be in by August. And then you would have to wait until May to get approval. So there's, that's it. Questions?
It would be open to everybody in the county.
It would be something we'd have to talk about next year. I, I have no opinion on it. It'd be, you know, as it starts at freshmen, it might be hard for freshmen to come from other schools. But your juniors and seniors already coming up to the tech center could make it easily to, to get to there. But, you know, it's something to, to consider and look at.
So that, that's something that we would have to consider. If it's a four-year program and you have to have at least 50 kids, then that makes it a bit of a challenge to do it at our smaller schools. If it's a nine through 12 again program and we do it at the tech center, then it starts to impact the schedules for those freshmen as well. So it suits a school better like Rustberg or even Brookville at the same time. It kind of limits access from the other smaller schools.
And, and this is just kind of proof of concept. Can we get it going? How does it go? What's our interest? You know, it doesn't limit us in any way, but we got to start somewhere.
Would you think you'd get 50 kids from Rustberg to do this?
Right, because it's, it's nine through 10th grade, nine through 12th grade. So I think so, yeah. Our interest says we could. We interviewed, when we surveyed eighth graders, our interest says it's there. Yep. Now, do they stay through all four years? Maybe not. Maybe they take it the first year and say, nah, wasn't for me. Or now I want to go and do a different elective. But yeah, I think we, I think we have the interest there.
So our application is by division, not by school?
It's by school.
So once we started it, we could, we could grow it as we needed to? Okay.
They do recommend a 45-minute class. We think we could fit that into the block schedule. We already have that kind of classes arranged. So we haven't seen any red flags that say, no, we couldn't pull this off.
With this program, would kids also qualify? Because I know that there's four-year J R T C scholarships if you do J R T C for all four years. years.
Great point. The scholarships and opportunities are unlimited for moving into that, if that's the direction they want to go. Other college scholarships or civic things, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it would set them up very well for that.
Did your survey address the branches or are you just?
No, just interested in, pardon me, interested in a generic JRTC program.
And you pursued Navy?
I pursued Navy if I can. I don't have any connection to the Navy, Mr. Siskin might be able to talk about it. But I think this is, if you look around our community, there's a lot of Navy-related industry here. So you could think maybe we could approach some of our industry partners for a grant to help seed this that...
Good thinking, yeah.
That's kind of what, that was my thinking on why it would maybe, the other ones are just as equally good, you know?
What would be your preferred qualifications for instructors to start this thing off?
I would like somebody that has a little bit of military experience and have experienced some of that life. Now, maybe they're not retired, but they at least can help kids understand what those first two years would look like. If they're going to enlist, I think you need to have somebody with a little bit of experience to give them that wisdom. But I don't think it's much more beyond that. Maybe, but police officers have that as well. I think a police officer, somebody who has that type of experience could do well in it. But anybody's great with kids, I think, who wants to go learn the program. They're going to teach them the program, but they got to be squared away, you know?
So having that experience would be great, having the ability to work well with kids.
Yeah.
You have to determine if you apply for ROTC versus the, what was it?
NNDC, yeah, it's a horrible...
Whatever the other program, do you have to determine that upfront?
Yes, sir. And they basically have said, "You're not going to get ROTC." There's a waitlist, people have already ahead of you waiting, and I saw the waitlist, it's a mile long, yeah. And right now, there's a national shortage on instructors for the JRTC, so it would probably be a three- to five-year wait for JRTC.
Because I've been at the ROTC, they pay half for the instructors. I got a buddy that does a bit of the...
Yeah, at the lower end, it's half, it could be more, right, yeah, yeah. Depending on how the division sets the salary.
Division sets it up.
That's right.
They pay half.
That's right. They'll pick up some of the cost of uniforms and some other things, but yeah, yeah. Good questions. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Can you send that aside?
Sure.
So with your blessing, we'll keep moving forward and report back as we make progress. Do you need a motion?
Thank you all for those presentations, it was a lot and we appreciate it. Any speakers from the floor? No. When was the last time we didn't have any speakers?
Dr. Patillo expressed his appreciation for having him. They had a family emergency and we'll try to reschedule him at a later date.
Okay. All right. Next order of business is approval of the April 22 meeting minutes. Do I entertain a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Phillips, second by Ms. Vaughn, that we approve the meeting minutes. Any questions? If none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Payment of bills.
Mr. Chairman, I reviewed the bills for last period and moved to approve payment.
Second.
Which one do you all want?
I'll pass.
Preferred, Mrs. Parker.
Motion by Dr. Miller that we pay the bills, second by Ms. Parker, is that where it came from?
Yeah.
Any questions? If none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Acceptance of donations, Michelle.
Tonight, you have a list of donations for approval. Unless you have any questions, I ask that you approve it as presented.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Maddox, second by Ms. Vaughn, that we accept the donations. Any questions, comments? If none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, consideration of non-resident tuition, Michelle.
You have a list of students for approval. Unless you have any questions, I ask that you approve that, please.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Dr. Miller, second by Ms. Tanner, that we approve the non-resident tuition list. Any questions or comments? If none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Consideration of requests for supplemental appropriations, Michelle.
You have four appropriations listed tonight on board docs. Unless you have any questions on those, I would ask that you approve them as presented.
Do I hear a motion?
Motion.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Maddox, second by Ms. Parker, that we approve the request for supplemental appropriations. Any questions?
What was the difference on the first one, Michelle? That has looked a little different than they typically do. That's food supplies and...
Yeah, school nutrition had one instead of, which is a different fund than the general operating fund. That's what the first two were.
All right, okay.
Any more questions? If none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Ms. Hunley, personnel report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Just a couple of weeks ago, when I was here, I said that we had 30 openings for next school year. We've chipped away at that, we're down to 24 as of today. So our principals are still working at it as they're closing out the year and all the other busy things that's going on right now. Dr. Ranelle let me know that he's still got the, he's going to close the year, five full-time and five part-time openings that he needs. He does have two in a CDL class, so hopefully we'll make some progress on that going into the beginning of next school year. So unless you have any questions, I'd ask that you approve the personnel list as written.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Vaughn, second by Ms. Tanner, that we approve the personnel report. Anybody got any questions about it?
If I could...
Huh?
Go ahead, please, go ahead.
Me go ahead?
Go ahead, yes.
I forgot where I was. Any more questions about it? If none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
If I could, that's what I was getting ready to say, take one more minute. I wanted to introduce Maggie Wilkerson is here with us tonight. She is on the board report that you approved. She is going to be our welcomed new director of secondary. As you know, Dr. Hale has worn two hats this year, so we are very excited to bring Ms. Wilkerson on board next year. She's coming to us as the principal at Mecklenburg County High School. Prior to that, she was principal at Bluestone County High School, and she's also been a principal in a middle school. So we're excited to have her expertise in secondary join us next school year. I think a couple of you had a chance to meet her. Thanks.
Ms. Wilkerson, would you like to come up here and tell us about yourself, what you like to do, and nothing about school, that's sure. We'll get enough of that next year.
Chairman and board members, good evening. First of all, I want to thank you for the opportunity to join Campbell County Public Schools. It is my honor to be here and it is my honor to begin July 1st. I'm very excited about the opportunity. I'm excited to learn you all, learn your schools, learn your staff, and learn your students, so.
So what have you heard about Campbell County?
That it's amazing and it's where I need to be.
Works for us.
Good job, Amy.
And we are thrilled to have you. We have a high bar.
I do too.
We want the best.
Thank you, thank you. I will give you my best, I promise. All right, thank you.
I will say that Superintendent of Mecklenburg, you may have met him, he did the presentation on the attendance boundaries, Scott Warner, and he called me. And Scott, actually, he used to be the principal at the Mississippi High School, so I told him, when I talked to him on the phone, we were in a bit of a fraternity, and he said, "You'd be crazy to pass up Maggie," so we're fortunate to have him.
Well, thank you, and again, it's my pleasure. Have a great evening.
Thank you so much.
So will you be, you say you live in Halifax, so you'll be driving up 501 every day, huh? Be careful.
For now.
All right. Dr. Stanley, you got some more stuff for us?
I do, I've got a few things for you. First of all, I'd like to recognize Dr. Bradley Shields for being here tonight and tell him and the board that the Virginia Board of Education has just recognized Rustburg High School for continuous improvement with the Exemplar Award in the area of the graduation rate and the dropout rate. To get this award, you have to improve over a three-year period and meet certain benchmarks, and I want to congratulate Dr. Shields on that, that's quite an accomplishment. Yeah, and that's been year in and year out. I mean, that's just proven hard work to get kids across the finish line to graduate, so congratulations to him. And then in your packet, I've also got a pamphlet that has information about a Regional Military Signing Day, and that's going to be this Friday, May 17. And that's going to include schools from Bedford, Alphamatics, Lunsberg, Amherst, and Campbell County. It was kind of put together at the last minute, but I'm certainly appreciative of Dr. Mark Bergen of Bedford. He put this together and invited everybody to participate, and it should be a great day. We've got 11 kids that have been identified as going to the Armed Services that have indicated that they will be there on that day. So again, that will be at the National D-Day Memorial on Friday. If you can make it, let me know if you'd like to go, because they are asking for an RSVP. I think Dr. Hale's already provided you with a list of award ceremonies and graduations. I think the next time we meet, our kids will, our seniors will have graduated and all ceremonies will be over. So take advantage of that, go out and see the great things that have taken place all year. And for Dr. Miller, our Laurel graduation is May 28, so that's right around the corner. And the last thing I have for you is, in looking at the paper this week, we see that our governor and General Assembly have reached an agreement with the budget. It seems to be favorable, so we'll wait to get the details before presenting anything, but as soon as we have it in place, we'll come back with potential amendments to our budget and make some changes. That's all I got.
That's all we got. All right. Before we start, board member comments in this brown envelope everybody has is the evaluation forms for Dr. Stanley. If you all will complete it, mail it to me in that envelope that's already got a stamp on it in there, just fill it out, send it to me, and I'll summarize it, and at our next meeting, I'll review it with the board and Dr. Stanley. If you have any questions, you can call me or Dr. Stanley.
What if we need a bigger envelope?
Well, I'll come get it. Just call me and I'll come down to this thing, get it. I'm not going to step out of term, but Dr. Shields, at the last meeting, you weren't here. And we gave all of the administrators a chance to toot your horn about your high school. You can opt out, you can... No, 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 I'm going to give you a chance to come by. We're going to let the board member speak and then we'll let you go, so I'm giving you a chance to assimilate everything together.
Or sneak out.
So, so, all right. The board members will present different topics. Mr. Maddox, you need, like, you look like you need to go first.
I'm going to go quick.
Okay.
I just want to congratulate our track team, they won the district, the boys did, and the girls placed second. And I would like to thank everybody in our community and everybody's community that supported Teacher Appreciation Week. I think our teachers gained some pounds this week. That's all I got.
All right, David?
Well, congratulations to Dr. Shields on the Exemplar Award, outstanding effort there by you and your staff, so congratulations. Sent me a few things from RHS going on this coming, over the next few weeks. The course, Spring Concert is May 23 at 7 o'clock, and they're also doing a senior walk at Concord, Rustburg, and Yellow Branch that same day, 11 to 2. And the Senior Community Awards is May 29 at 6. And as Hale, you've given us all the other dates for baccalors, graduations, appreciate that information. Thanks for the speakers tonight. Dr. Pines, thanks for your information on ROTC, I'm in full support of that, so hopefully we can move forward with that. A great program for Campbell County, I think, so. That's all I got, Barry.
Okay. What's the follow?
I just wanted to say congratulations to Dr. Shields, it's a huge accomplishment. I also, we celebrated Teacher Appreciation Week last week, so I wanted to extend a heartfelt thank you to all of our teachers. Your dedication, passion, and hard work does not go unnoticed. Your impact goes beyond the classroom, shaping the future of our students and our community. Thank you for all that you do. And congratulations to all of our upcoming graduates, your hard work and dedication is about to pay off. We're incredibly proud of you and we have lots of really fun end-of-the-year activities coming up, end-of-year award ceremonies, field trips, field days, and I'm really excited for all the festivities, and I encourage everyone to enjoy and be safe.
Ms. Parker?
Yes, thank you. Yes, the graduations cannot wait. So we've got the first one in our little trifecta up at Brookville is Tomahawks 5th grade, graduations the 3rd, oh, I missed it. Middle School is the 29th for 8th graders. Then Tomahawk for 5th graders is the 30th, and then of course, Brookville High School, it'll be all the girls, should we wear our pink construction hats to graduation for Brookville on the 31st. And then our CBCC duly enrolled students are this week, the 15th.
Wednesday.
Yeah, Wednesday night, yeah, super excited for that. And since our last meeting, I was invited, you know, by Randy Dunton of Legacy Education. I just want to thank him again and his entire team. I went and spoke to the kids, and it's always great to give them some examples of my kids who they didn't know what they wanted to do in high school. Not one of my five boys had a clue, you know, in high school, what they were going to do. And the kids are just so receptive to that program, and I know a lot of the kids who've been through the Legacy Program, whether they went and are working on their associates or they've got them jobs, they've helped with daycare, so I appreciate our board too for allowing Legacy into our schools. There are a lot of other divisions that pick or choose one or the other, and I tell folks, we're always just so thankful that Campbell allows anyone who's going to be a resource to our kids, especially post-graduation. So really appreciated that. I took advantage of the opportunity to walk through Brookville, since I was already there with my pink construction hat that Ms. White gave all the ladies on the board. And I was super impressed, as I always am. The foreman, Jeff, is amazing, and the job is clean. You know, there's very little interruption in the school for the children or the teachers, everybody. A foundation, it was already in for the new supplemental gym, auxiliary gym, that's the right word. It looks great, cannot wait, and everyone there is super excited. And yes, and I love the eloquence of Ms. Vaughn's statement tonight, right? Yeah, we're super excited for all of our graduates and can't wait to see what they do next.
Dr. Miller?
I too want to say thank you, Ms. Vaughn, for the way you said that, and I couldn't say it any better, but I have the same sentiments. Both presentations tonight were excellent, appreciate it. Excited about the opportunity with the JRTC or whichever one we go with. I think, I think we can make the budget work probably if we want to and find the resources we need, so I'm excited about that. And I'm obviously excited about anything we can do to improve and supplement and just have all of our kids reading at or above grade level. And so, well put together presentation, I hope it's all it's cracked up to be, but I can see a lot of work has been put into it, so I appreciate that. Dr. Shields, congratulations. Anytime we have recognition for any of our schools, you know, it reflects, it reflects the administration and the teachers and the dedication. And so just share that, be sure to share that with your teachers, rest of your staff, and how proud the board is of that. And then last, I believe, is we had a Laurel Board meeting. Laurel kids, they do a lot of little field trips and out of, they do a lot... Laurel kids, they do a lot of little field trips and out of, they, they, they do a lot there that they need transportation. And in the past, it hasn't been, it's been addressed by the different divisions and it's done well. But as school bus drivers have become harder and harder to come by, we basically bought them their own small bus. And so that's a big deal for them, but they will be getting their own bus. And so I just wanted to pass that on to the board. So it's a big deal and we're glad for them, so that's all I.
Thank you. Ms. Tanner?
Just to reiterate, thank you to all of our teachers. I think they did eat very well and we're certainly spoiled. But a shout out to our school nurses too, I think that sometimes. And I was the, had a kid that missed the school nurse that day that she wasn't there. So I think we sometimes don't realize how much they do until they're not in there or the regular nurse is not there. And so just a shout out to our school nurses as well, because sometimes we overlook that if we don't utilize them on a regular basis. But no, it's, it's May-ember in our house, so that's graduations, it's everything end of the year. And so I think just being mindful of everything that's going on within our schools and encouraging our parents and our community out there and celebrate with our, with our teachers and with our students. And keep it short and simple today.
I did hear you say that the next meeting will have the valedictorians and salutatorians. Good. Certainly, teacher appreciation week, can express the appreciation and the gratitude we have for all of our teachers that work so hard. Rustburg Middle School, Evan Reedy and his help, administration and other teachers, they had a successful plant sale, raised more than seventeen thousand dollars selling plants. Said lots of happy customers. And the people that helped him were just, just so helpful and enthusiastic. It was just amazing to see them there, so got a good thing going there. Concord had a successful booster fund run, I think last week, raised over sixteen thousand PTA and PE equipment. Ms. Wilkerson, appreciate you coming, look forward to working with you. And I think that's all I got. Anybody got anything else? If not.
Dr. Shields?
Dr. Shields!
Slipping through.
Thank you so much, thank you so much. Now, we, last week, we put the three-minute timer on everybody, but we're just gonna, we'll, we'll let you speak since you.
Well, I, I am brief and, so I, I'll take the chance to brag about my people. You know, we're really excited and thrilled for our teachers. You know, that award says a lot about our folks. And it's not just, you know, that award's not just a one-year thing, that's a cumulative thing. So that goes back several years, all the way to Dr. Hale's day. So, you know, we, we got a lot of folks working hard to get that done. Recently, we just had our Senior Decision Day where we had seventy-five seniors commit to where they're going to college. And on that day, we also celebrated ten kids, student athletes, that'll be going on and signed at the college level, which we're really excited about. Some exciting news we just got earlier this week. One of our seniors, Jenna Bryant, I received a full scholarship to JMU. So we're gonna celebrate that in the next couple of weeks, really excited about that. We got all our senior events going on. Our seniors will be traveling and visiting Concord Elementary and Rustburg and Yellow Branch to do their senior walks on May the twenty-third, which we're really excited about that. And we just got a lot of things going on, so.
That's great.
Nice job.
That's great, yeah.
How many kids you got graduating?
Roughly a hundred and ninety, so.
So thirty percent going to college.
And that's just the ones that signed that day. That's, you know, we'll have others that sign, but those are just the ones that signed on that day.
That's great.
So we got them all T-shirts and they put their names on their T-shirts and took pictures and gave them food because teenagers like to eat, so. And we also, our teacher appreciation week, we had a lot of support from local businesses. Chick-fil-A donated items, La Corretta, we had a lot of support during teacher appreciation week, so.
We certainly appreciate what you're doing there, doing.
Thank y'all, thank y'all for all your support.
I mean, you had big shoes to fill, but you're doing a great job. We appreciate it.
Thank y'all.
Thank you. All right, then, did I forget anything else? Just one, I mean, give me a day or two to, don't bring them at the next meeting.
Was Gary done already? Are you done already?
And said, have you finished already?
I ain't gonna know where to be tomorrow. I'm good.
Entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Parker, second by Dr. Miller, that we adjourn. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you.